I give Officer Bowie a... Okay, well, welcome, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for being here. We've got a pretty full calendar, at least as far as our ceremonial matters, which is always nice. So I will then open up our regular meeting of City Council for June 4th, 2024. Call to order. Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Chen?
Here.
Councilmember Man? Absent. Councilmember Sternquist?
Absent.
Mayor Pro Tem Yu?
Here.
Mayor Chavez?
Here. Could we get a motion regarding Councilmember Man?
May I excuse Councilmember Man?
Second.
Okay. Is there any objection? For cause, thank you. Hearing no objection, the motion carries. So, thank you. We will now move on to our invocation, and I'm so happy to see Pastor Andrew here from the Live Oak Community Church located, of course, at 9642 Live Oak Avenue, who will provide tonight's invocation. Just a couple of church updates and upcoming events. Live Oak Community Church hosted their official public launch on Easter Sunday, March 31st of this year, and they were very, very, very grateful to have Mayor Chavez there. No, that's what it says here.
You're missing one very...
Yeah, okay. And I was very honored to be there, by the way.
Thank you.
To help inaugurate that important event, so thank you for the invitation. As an additional step in its launch, to its launch in the community, church will be hosting the next Chamber of Commerce Temple City Ignites Mixer. So that's going to be exciting on Wednesday, June 19th. So we're looking forward to that. And of course, the church will be hosting their Vacation Bible School for children, preschool through 5th grade, beginning Thursday, July 11th through Saturday, July 13th. For more information, you can visit the church's website at www.livocommunitychurch.church. And of course, anyone who is looking for a warm, vibrant, multi-generational, and multicultural church to call home, you are welcome to attend on Sundays. The service begins at 11 o'clock. Of course, no service would be complete without refreshments to begin, so get there early and you can have refreshments. So, okay, so Pastor Andrew, we'll turn it over to you. Everyone, please stand.
Lord of all creation, thank you for another day, another chance to take in and enjoy the goodness of all that you've created. Thank you for the blessing of our community, Temple City. Thank you for the leaders before us today, our mayor, council members, staff, and all leaders and individuals who've taken on the task of seeking the success, the thriving of our community. All wise God, would you grant these leaders wisdom and guidance as they work to lead us toward that very success and thriving, even in this moment amidst every decision and every point of dialogue and discernment? Good and gracious God, would you ultimately bless this community in ways only you can? Have favor upon Temple City. May it flourish in ways that would bring us to a sense of awe and wonder, for your name's sake. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Okay, if everyone will please remain standing, face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's always nice to see people in our audience. It always reminds us that we have ceremonial matters tonight, so that's always a good thing. So we're going to start off our ceremonial, item six, with a recognition of our Parks and Rec Commissioner Cynthia Vance. It's kind of a bittersweet recognition. Cynthia is stepping down from our Parks and Recreation Commission after nine years, I believe, correct? Eight or nine? Who lost? We lost count, but it's been a long time. That was longer than you and I, I think. No, no, not you. Longer than me. You were there forever. Okay, but it's been a while. And, you know, we're very sad to see you go, of course. We know that you'll still be around, and so certainly we want to recognize your service here tonight. I want to begin by kind of tell a little bit about you and what you've been doing, if you don't mind indulging. You began your service in July of 2016. You've served as chair in the 1920 and 23, 24 terms. You will always be remembered as being instrumental in initiating the pickleball program. I bet you none of you knew that, huh? Our great pickleball courts that we have in Live Oak Park. Cindy was the one who started all of that. So thank you for that, and I'm sure you've been over there and seen them, and they're booming. So thank you for that as well. Other commissioned projects that you've participated in, of course, Veterans Memorial, Live Oak Park Walking Path, which of course is used tremendously, Primrose Park, of course, again, our four permanent pickleball courts, Live Oak Park and Temple City Park Playground renovations. You were part of the commission in getting that started as well, and I'm sure some of you may have noticed, the one out here at Temple City Park is almost complete, and we are going to have that kind of formal grand opening at our first summer concert in a couple of weeks. Of course, you've been... Let's see, what is Gaga Ball Pit at Live Oak Park? I don't even know what that is. What is that, Cynthia? Gaga Ball Pit?
Falling pit.
That's what it is? Okay. All right. Well, we've got one at Live Oak Park, apparently. And of course, our public art, Rosemead Directory artwork and a Live Oak Park softball mural. Been part of the city's Master Tree List update, and of course, the adoption of our master, senior master plan. So it goes without saying that we're very honored and appreciative of your work in the city. Your commitment and dedication to public service over the last nine years is just amazing. Your unwavering efforts and contributions with the Parks and Recreation Commission have significantly impacted our community, and you will greatly be remembered for that. So thank you so much for being part of that. You know, whether it's interaction with the public, implementing policies, or supporting community programs, your contributions have been invaluable. As I mentioned, a lot of the projects that we have seen over the years started with your part in that, so thank you so much. I know that you take pride in the difference that you have made, not only in difference in our city, but in the lives that you have touched. And for that, we will be forever thankful. Your legacy of service will continue to inspire and impact the Temple City community for years to come. And you only have to look behind you to see all the people here that are here tonight for you. So that speaks volumes. So at this time, I would like to invite you up to the dais. I want to present you with a certificate of recognition. And if we could have my fellow council members join us, and I know Jerry's going to want to take a photo. And Cynthia, would you like to say a few words before we do that? No? Are you sure? All right. You can... I'll let you sit up here if you want, because you're kind of used to it. No? Okay. All right. Well, let's come on up.
I don't...
That's okay.
Welcome.
All right. This is for you. So you're going to hold this up in front of you, and turn it around so Jerry can see it.
Beautiful.
All right. Pay it in there?
Yeah.
Look at me, Cindy.
Over. Supposed to hide my stomach.
We need a bigger one.
Yes.
Mayor, for the people that love her to come on up?
Of course. Everyone who loves her, that's everybody. Come on up. We'll get a group photo. Good idea. No problem. All right. Get yourself so you can see Jared.
Yeah, I want to see your face.
We just wanted to hi. I'm lying to wait.
Okay? Good. I can see everybody. Good. Okay. Hold your shirt. Come for... Yeah, there you are. Yeah, maybe hold it.
Is it hiding that chair? I'll help you hide.
Here we go. Look over here. Thank you.
Okay, so no one leave yet, okay? We're going to go a little bit out of order, but that's okay. City Attorney, you're allowing me to do that a little bit? Okay, good. All right. So...
You're doing it anyway.
Don? Don Tarran would like to say a few words, if you don't mind. So, Don, go ahead.
I would first like to thank the City Council for recognizing Cindy Vance. Too many Cindys in the...
Too many Cindys in this room.
And while she's being recognized for her work as a Parks and Recreation Commissioner, she is such an amazing volunteer, which is represented by a lot of us here today. I first met her working on the Measure S project for the school district, which is now resulting in the brand-new sports complex that's going into high school and will be kicked off on this Friday night. And so that's my first chance to meet Cindy. Throughout the years, she's been involved in so many different projects. She's served as president for the Kiwanis Club and volunteers for that. She served on the Relay for Life Committee. She's served on the Civil Grand Jury. And she... I actually, when I first became Camellia Festival Director, I asked her to be my ticket booth chairman. Little did she know how much work that was. And she stayed on as a volunteer. But Cindy was always there anytime you said, "Can I get somebody to help?" She was always there to... If she could possibly help at a booth or volunteer, she was always there, and it's truly, truly appreciated, and she deserves the recognition. So thank you for honoring her tonight, and thank you all for coming.
Thank you. And again, Cindy, thank you again for all you've done, and I think you can feel the love in the room, and that's, you know, take that with you and know that we always care, and we certainly hope to see you during the summer at the concerts and whatever else you can attend. So thank you. Okay. All right. With that, we will now move on to our second ceremonial matter, and that is the introduction of our Temple City Sister-City Students. I haven't said that in a long time, have we? When was the last time? 2018? No. 2019. 2019. We have not uttered those words, but we are so pleased that this year, we're going to be sending these four bright, energetic, fantastic students to represent the city of Temple City. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Leanne Baroldi to introduce our students. Leanne?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Chavez and councilmembers. You stole everything I was going to say.
That's okay. I usually do.
I'm so excited that after all of these years through COVID that we are able to start the student exchange with Temple City Sister-City and the Hawksbury. And we are just thrilled. We have four fantastic student ambassadors this year that we are so proud to send their own... And we're so happy that we have the opportunity to start the program and continue the friendship and the partnership between the cities that has existed for many, many years. So thank you so much for your support. I'm going to turn it over to each of the students and let them introduce themselves to you.
And do you mind if... And I know it's kind of last minute. I know they're going to introduce themselves, probably tell what grade they're in and where they go to school. But if you don't mind, and I know you've had some time to think about this, I'm going to put you on the spot. What are you... I want to hear from each of you. What are you looking most forward to in going to Australia? Because I know you've been thinking about it. So Dana, maybe share that with us. So go ahead.
Hi, my name is Livia DePaula. I'm an incoming junior at Temple City High School. Thank you so much for sponsoring this trip between Hawksbury, Australia, and TC. I'm so ecstatic to have this opportunity. And the thing I'm most excited for is to try the Australian cuisine and see how different it is from our food here. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Pearl, and I just finished my sophomore year of high school at Temple City High School. And the thing that I'm looking most forward to visiting Australia, thank you for the opportunity, by the way, I'm so, so excited. The thing I'm most looking forward to is visiting the capital of Canberra, because I'm very much a diplomacy person. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kyle Fung. I'm an incoming senior at Temple City High School. And the thing I'm most excited for is making friends at school and finding Australians to play basketball with.
All right. I think they're... I think they have a lot better now, so you gotta, you know, it'll be good.
Yeah, they are.
Hi, my name is Krista Wong. I'm an incoming junior at Temple City High School, and I'm so grateful for this opportunity to be going to Australia this summer. I'm most excited to experience high school. So, yeah, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Now, before you all leave, we have some certificates of recognition that we'd like to present to you to commemorate your selection to represent the city of Temple City as an ambassador. And so we want to present each of those to you. And if I could have the council come up one more time, and we'll get a good photo off for Jerry. So why don't you guys just stand right there in front of us? Good. Don't go away. Okay, so Kyle? Kyle Fung? Where is Kyle? There he is, right there. How can I miss him? Thank you. Congratulations. All right. And then we've got Pearl? Pearl Shi. Congratulations. Yeah? And Livia? Congratulations. Are you on Temple City High School?
Yeah.
Okay. Marsden. Marsden. And Krista Wong. Now, you may remember Krista, because she started in this program when she was about 15. Because her sister went to Australia a few years ago. Kristy, how many years ago was that? 2016. So we'll see. She already knows everything she has. Okay, so...
Okay. There you go. End. Pearl Wong? How do I take a picture, Pearl? Can we get Nancy in?
Yeah, 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 of course. That's what I said.
Hope again.
Where's the big guy tonight? He stayed on? Oh, he's a joke. All right.
Put the roll higher, Pearl. There you go.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so if anybody's going to leave, this is the time. We won't be offended.
Okay. We will now move on to item number six, public comment. And we already took care of the one public comment that I had. Does anybody else wish to address the council at this time? Okay. Here, seeing none, I will close public comments. And we will now move on to item seven. However, before we get to that, one, I'm going to pull item 7E. We have a speaker request form for item 7E, so I'm going to pull that. And then I'm going to ask our city manager, Brian Cook, to give us a little further information on item D. I'm not going to pull it, but I think you wanted to speak before we got to it. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez and members of the council. Item 7D is the purchase of Cobra headlights, essentially the streetlights that you see throughout the city. We contract out with the county of Los Angeles, who does all the replacements. One thing that was not noted in the staff report was that the county of Los Angeles does all the installations. So we go by their specifications, but the staff report neglected to point out that not only are the lights that we are procuring the preferred vendor and the preferred model of the county of Los Angeles, but it's also the county of Los Angeles that does that work. So we have an ongoing contract, maintenance contract, with the county. Our budgeted... Our budget for the Los Angeles improvements includes their installation. That was neglect... That was omitted from the staff report. I just want to make sure for clarity's sake and for transparency's sake, that's there.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anybody else wish to speak on any or pull any matters? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Motion to approve the consent calendar?
Other than item E.
Item E.
Yes, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay. That motion carries unanimously. We will now move on to item...
E.
E, 7E. And Jerry Jambezi, you would like to speak on this matter, so go ahead.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm concerned about the crossing guards, and I appreciate the fact that Temple City provides crossing guards along with the school district, and you're sharing the cost or having the major portion of it. But it's on my way to work in the mornings, and I'm concerned because many, many times, I see the crossing guards on their cell phone, either on it or looking at it. And they should have 100% attention to what they're doing. It's a safety issue. Our kids are important. You're paying them over $30 an hour each to watch it, and your budgeted amount is $198,000, I think, a year. So, I mean, I don't want to be the tattletale, and I don't want to take photos of them on their cell phone while they should be watching what they're doing, but I'm wondering if there's some way that we can hold them accountable and have better training for them through their organization that they should not be doing this. Thank you.
I would agree, and I know that Mr. Cook has been taking some notes, and I'm sure you'll look into that for us. Thank you. Okay. Can we have a motion then on item 7E?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve item 7E.
Thank you. Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. If we could have roll call, please.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Yeah, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will now move on to item eight, our public hearing. There is none. Unfinished business. Number nine, none. We will now move on to item 10, new business. Approval of plans and authorization to invite bids for city hall and city council chambers, building roof, and HVAC replacement project. Before we get to that, though, Scott, did you want to say anything? When are we going to introduce Tony?
During the city manager's comments.
All right. So I didn't have that in my notes. I just wanted to make sure we didn't forget you. Okay. So we'll do it during the city manager update. Okay. All right. Turn it over to you first?
Yes, please.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez and members of the council. Before you tonight is the approval of plans and authorization to invite bids for both the city hall and the council chambers this building, replacement of our roof and HVAC system. From a layman's perspective, this is a building that is quite old and has weathered a lot of storms, climate issues. Also, too, the HVAC system has really gone past its useful life. We're actually struggling with several of the units right now. We took the opportunity to do a very thorough and complete inspection of all the roofs and found some challenges structurally that we... It's usually when you have to do a roof, you kind of... You can strip off the roof and start all over. But we're going to take... This is a kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to really look at the roof, and it's really kind of the... Seal the building together in a way that can continue the useful life of this structure for many decades to come. So we are taking a very much more comprehensive and complete approach than just what you would think is your traditional roof replacement project. Mr. Kair will talk about some of the structural things. We brought in several experts, because this is a building that has been here for many, many decades. So we want to make sure that we're not only doing this in a thorough manner, but we're doing this in a complete and safe manner, meaning types of testing to make sure what's still maybe in the roof, what we've looked at. We've done some of that testing already, have a good idea of a sound... A sound idea of what we need to do from a structural standpoint and what protections we can take. But again, this is truly kind of a once-in-a-building lifetime opportunity to open up the roof. So we're spending a little bit more money than you would traditionally with a roofing project, and Mr. Kair is about to go over some of the details of that. This will be an impactful project. Luckily, is from a public service standpoint and a public counter-service standpoint, the impacts will be minimal to the public. It will be disruptive for employees and some of our other adjacent and ancillary staff that work with us, but we have some contingency plans for that as well going forward. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Kair.
Thank you. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Who's got the clicker? There we go.
Next slide. This is just for general information, showing the location of the project on the south side of city hall and on north side. We refer it as council chambers building, but it encompasses just not the council chambers, but also EOC and other areas, so it's the entire building. We are referring it as council chambers. So those are two buildings we're going to be replacing, roof and HVAC. I mean, in a traditional roof replacement, you basically walk from the top of the building. If the roof condition is not that bad, basically, you just have to remove the top of the roof, you look at the plywood and replace some portions of it. But in this case, this is a very old roof. And by the way, I do have our senior consultant architect, who led the design effort on this, and they looked at all of the aspects and several elements, and the recommendation is to replace entire plywood and nailing as well. So basically, you're going to get a brand-new hardcover plywood attached to framing elements, and then on top of that, we're going to have new insulation and new roof, which is energy-efficient, a PVC roof. It's different than what we have right now. With the replacement, during our field reviews, we discovered an area on the city hall... Next slide, please. That's basically just general information. That's basically just general information. It's almost, you know, since 1957, that's when the city hall was built with brick masonry, and then in 1998, there was a retrofit on the east side of the city hall, raising the roof. So that created a little bit of a challenge for us. And next slide, please. And in general, this is our, and based on what we observed in the field and review of the plans, we came up with basically a general scope, which is, goal is to provide an efficient implementation approach, because as I will point out in the next slide, we're not going to only work from the top. In certain areas, we're going to work from the bottom to do some additional wall within the roof cavity to strengthen that connection. And of course, we're going to be starting a new energy-efficient rooftop and HVAC units. And as the last bullet point shows, we're going to upgrade existing framing in the area. We call it eastern corridor, that's where city manager and restrooms are and the boardroom is, that's, that's east corridor. In that area, we're going to be adding in the roof cavity a new plywood and then kind of connection between the roof elements and then beams underneath. Next slide, please. This is, the blue area is the area where I'm talking about, where we're going to add the structural, addition structural elements. So that's where the impact of work is going to take place. We're going to work from top and the bottom. The rest of the roof areas is going to be just traditional from the top. We're going to take out everything on the top, expose everything, come back, put new plywood, and then new roof, and then at the end, we're going to put air conditioning units. We're going to do this in kind of stages to minimize the impacts, because as we're doing the roof replacement, we want to make sure we do the HVAC replacement in the shortest time possible, so that inconveniences associated with it is mitigated. The mitigation is going to include bringing temporary HVAC system when we remove the old HVAC units and put the new ones. And that's in the city hall, by the way, not in the council chambers yet. I'm just talking about city hall. And so that part, we're hoping to schedule as the last item. So we do everything else, work from the top, and then when we're ready, we come in and then do the work on the east side. This is our preliminary plan, but we're going to be having a pre-bid meeting with general contractors, roof contractors and all that. We'll get their opinion too during pre-bid meeting. If they have some suggestions, we're going to incorporate those into final, as an addendum, and proceed with the project accordingly. Next slide, please. The total project budget, we're allocating approximately 3.5 million for everything. Reason for that is we have a high contingency factor for a project like that, as well as we're going to have allowances, like allowances for providing temporary HVAC units, allowances for, in case there is a rain or something, to cover roof immediately with plastic, allowances for several items. When we open up the roof and plywood, there may be some additional framing elements we may want to replace, because our structural engineers will be on site looking at those things. Those are covering allowance, not, doesn't mean we're going to use all of it, but we want to have enough budget here so that we can take care of these things. When we're done, this building can be used for a few more decades, basically.
Can, real quick, go back to the previous slide. Can you explain, maybe for the audience, what do you mean by why the HVAC equipment purchased by the city to CMAS? Why is that important?
CMAS, CMAS is State of California Multiple Award Schedule. It's a state purchasing platform, and we've been using that for many projects, for example, the park equipment we purchase directly on state purchasing platform. So that gives the city actually two advantages. One, price, because we get a discounted price, that's a set price, and the manufacturers, vendor who are member of that purchasing system are required to sell the equipment the same price that they sell to state. Second, we are going to be able to purchase them in advance, and as the contractor works on the roof, it's about 10, 12 iterations, we will have those in place. Otherwise, if we wait, then it's going to be three months for the contractors to purchase that, so that puts us closer and closer to year end or next year. So those are two advantages.
Good, thank you.
We're estimating, we're going to start construction August, September, and be done by the end of the year with all the punches and all that. We just want to beat the rainy season on this project. And again, the schedule and all that, once we have a contract on board, we'll have a very detailed schedule, and we'll know exactly when it's going to be, we're going to be doing which element of the roof or work. Next, please. And the recommendation are basically tonight to approve the plans and specs we provide a draft bid package. Once you approve that, we'll finalize it and issue it for bids, advertise for bids. And again, the third item, authorizing city manager option of purchasing the HVAC units on CMAS, as we have done very similar approach for park projects, equipment. And then after we, you know, select the contract, we'll come back and present to city council. That's...
Thank you.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes.
If I can just summarize as well, real quickly, we've gone through a pretty exhaustive process in identifying the most cost-efficient, but also the method in which the delivery of services, meaning those people who are coming to the city and counters, can still receive services that they receive today. It will be disruptive, but we truly considered what it would take. And luckily for us, the part of the roof that needs the structural repair is on the other side of where the public counters are not. So we were able to work with the architect, engineers and our staff to really develop a plan that, while disruptive, still does not disrupt the level of public service. So, for example, we will have temporary structures on the parking lot for the staff that's on the east side of the building, but also, too, the staff on the counter side of the building will be able to continue to provide services throughout this process. One person I do need to acknowledge, though, is beyond being just our community development director, he's being our chief project lead as well, as well as architect and other functions, is Scott Reimers, our community development director, who has taken the brunt of the duties of really working through this project with TransTech and our subconsultants.
Okay, I might add to that for the public. Mr. Reimers and Mr. Kair graciously agreed to meet with each of us individually to go and do great detail of this project before tonight as well, so thank you for doing that. Made it, made it a little easier for all of us to understand, so thank you for that. Did you want to introduce the gentleman that's with you tonight?
Yes.
Please, if you don't mind.
John Silber is the principal at IDS, and we worked with John for a couple of decades.
A couple of decades, okay.
Yeah, good evening. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, but just to introduce myself and the group, I am a principal architect with IDS group, and IDU's group is multi-discipline AE firm. So the structural engineering and the HVAC and all the related work was done by, by our team. So we've been working on this for, for a good long time, because anytime you remodel your own building, you're living in it and you're trying to operate out of it. We give a lot of thought to that, including estimating the construction costs. We carry our own in-house cost estimator as well, and try to do good constructability review on the projects. So we think it's well-prepared. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Well, it's not, it's not like redoing your roof on your house where you can go stay in a hotel for a couple of days.
That's right.
We still need to keep, keep working.
Stick around.
So that's good. Well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll entertain any council questions at this time? Anybody on the council wish to ask any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have just a simple question, but we have to do more with the schedule. I mean, I, it was, I appreciate the fact that you're going to bring in Mr. Kair, the plan is bringing in temporary AC unit if needed, and the work is mostly done in the cooler fall period of the year.
That we're trying to do.
However, there's, there's one concern I have, that is, that I don't know if there's any way you can speed up the schedule a little bit, because I'm really more worried about the rain. I know we, it's hard to tell. I mean, typically it doesn't rain until December, January, but we're wrapping up the project like towards the end of the year, there's always that, you know, weird chance that it might rain on us without the roof over our building. So I was just wondering if you would consider at least, I mean, you don't have to answer yes, right? Take a look at, if there's any chance that we might be able to get it, get it out of the street sooner, maybe reduce the bid period and somehow get a notice received sooner, so we'll be out of the rainy season during construction.
We're going to do everything possible to shorten the schedule.
Yeah.
Okay. So in other words, don't get rid of our buckets yet, right? You never know. You know, it's crazy because of the, the weather we have, is, you never can tell, is it going to rain or it's going to be hot? It's just nowadays, it's hard to predict, so. Thank you. All right, if there are no other questions, I will open up public comment. Anybody, anyone in the audience wish to speak at this time on this matter? Seeing no one getting up, I will close public comments. Any final council comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, may I make one?
Go ahead.
So I really appreciate what Mr. Cook and Mr. Kair and our architect here had proposed. I mean, because this really addressed the longevity of the city hall, and as you all know, city hall is really a nerve center of the, of the city, and also is the center of emergency response. And what we're looking at in front of us right now is mainstream building that's very, very well-built, but the roof is a wood, wood roof, and it's been very, very old. So with this, I think it would really help the city in preparing for the future and for years to come, and I appreciate what was proposed. I look at the plans and look at everything else, I think it's well thought out, so just want to say I appreciate that.
And this is like your, your thing, right? Isn't it?
Yes, this is my kind of thing.
All right, good. Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would...
Go ahead.
Yes, I would move to approve plans, specifications for city hall and city council chamber building roof and HVAC replacement project. Authorize staff to advertise the project for bids. Authorize the city manager the option of purchasing the HVAC units on CMAS, the state's multiple award schedule or similar purchasing systems, which allow government agency the option to purchase equipment at pre-established prices and receive and file bid results and award a contract for the project at a future meeting.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, if we could have a rule call, please.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes, okay. Well, thank you, gentlemen and ladies. We look forward to the project and even more forward to getting it done. Long time coming. I know Brian's happy that it's finally happening.
Considering my house, my office is the one that gets flooded the most, but yeah, sure.
I've seen the buckets scattered around the office, so, yes, okay.
They went from small saucers to the big Home Depot bucket.
Yes, they get bigger. All right, we will now move on to item 11, update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez and members of the council. I'd like to bring up and introduce to you and to the community, our new community development supervisor, Tony Boo. Tony comes to us with an undergraduate degree of where every good planner comes from, Cal Poly Pomona. Tony started his career in the cities of San Gabriel and La Mina as a junior planner. For the last 10 years, Tony has served the city of Almani as a senior planner, working on some of the more complex projects that the city of Almani has had, from mixed-use to industrial to many other complex master plan projects throughout the city of Almani. He's overseen planning commission meetings, and we really look forward to his continued, his service to the community. Tony also has a master's of public administration from Cal State LA. He serves on several, a couple of other local boards in the San Gabriel Valley region, and we're really happy to have Tony, so I'll just introduce Tony real quick.
Thank you, and it's wonderful to have you here, Tony, tonight. We've met a few times in city halls, so would you like to say a few words to council? Go ahead.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Cook. Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members and members of the Temple City community. I started about two, a little over two months ago, and I only have really great things to say about the staff and about the city. I've felt really embraced by, by everyone, and I hope to continue to provide quality service for the community and provide quality development as well.
Great. Well, thank you so much, and it was a pleasure to meet you, and we look forward to seeing and talking with you more in the future. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome. All right, we will now move on. Is that it, Brian, or do you have anything else on your report?
I think you're probably going to announce tomorrow our park opening and stuff like that. Did you have that?
No, why don't you go ahead and say?
Sure. Just for the council that had mentioned earlier, and Mayor Chavez had mentioned earlier, we have two playgrounds that are being constructed in the city, one of which is already, you see outside of the council chambers. We will have a official kind of ground, grand opening right before the first concert in the park next week on the 12th. Look forward to anybody being there. We are on track with the project and doing well so far. You'll see the rubberized surfacing, the base is completed. Now you're going to see what, the kind of the wow factor of it and the decorative elements of, of that. So we will have, by the time we're done, sometime in early 2025, we will have three outstanding playgrounds that are really distinctive, interesting, and from a design standpoint, extremely attractive in, in their sense of what they provide as a service to the community. And we can really be proud of what we are providing for our families in Temple City. As you know, LA Times had an article a few months ago about the most interesting playgrounds in Southern California, and Roseme, excuse me, Primrose Park was noted as one of those top 12 playgrounds you must visit in Southern California. So we're going to keep that tradition going.
Just wait till they get their sights on Live Oak Park.
Live Oak Park is quite spectacular in its design. We, we, we use one of the finer architects of playground designs in the country, in SWA, and you'll start to see some of that play out and manifest itself in reality here pretty soon.
I forgot, Cindy, you were on that ad hoc, weren't you, for the park, for the design of the playgrounds?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Mann and Councilmember Sternquist.
Again, good shout out to both of you for, for getting that done.
Great job.
Good job. We're all looking forward to that, so. Okay, does that conclude your report for this evening?
Next, the next meeting, too, just one last thing, is we will be bringing to you the five-year agreement with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, actually technically with the county, for law enforcement services, and you'll have a very detailed report. Shout out to one of my colleagues in the San Gabriel Valley, Chris Constantine of San Dimas, who's been a partner of mine through this process in the last few weeks, a few months, excuse me, and appreciate his help. And I think we have an improved contract with the county, with all the stress that the county is under. You heard from the captain about their challenges with recruitment, staffing. We look towards this contract to both be a partner with the county, but also hold the county accountable for the services that they're providing, all 42 contract cities, including Temple City. So thank you, and we'll bring that forward to you on the next, to next meeting.
Look forward to hearing that. Okay, thank you. We will now move on to item 12, update from our city attorney. Mr. Murphy, nice to have you back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As, as noted the last time I was here, I attended along with most of the city attorneys in the state of California, the annual Cal, Cal Cities City Attorney Conference. If someone had wanted to, you know, release a virus into that room, you could have taken out at least 450 attorneys pretty quickly.
That sounds like that old lawyer's joke. What is it? What's, what's a thousand lawyers at the bottom of the ocean? A good start.
There you go. There you go. So just a couple of things that I learned... There you go. There you go. So just a couple of things that I learned, and I'll, I'll be briefing you on nights like tonight when it's a shorter agenda. Things we picked up while we were there. And I'm, I'm going to try and do it not sort of topically, but just kind of across the board so that different things of interest will hit you each time. So three things for tonight. The first, we learned about a case involving the California Environmental Quality Act. It was a Northern California case that involved a recycling center. And in that case, the staff had recommended an exemption to CEQA. I don't have which one in front of me, but it was a CEQA exemption. And then there was a, a large public outcry at the city council meeting. And the city council decided that it would require an environmental impact report. A nice six to 18-month study costing a couple hundred thousand dollars. The recycling center sued. Now, this is the type of action by the city council that we always thought was okay. We always thought, hey, more environmental study is better than less. But in this case, the court actually ruled for the recycling center. And it said that the city staff had, had done the work, had proven based on the facts and the drafting of the exemption and the regulations, that the exemption was applicable. And for the council to go against that, and given the financial impacts and delay, actually prejudiced the recycling center. So first time I've ever seen, or most of us had ever seen, a CEQA case say that less environmental study was okay. But it was something that we were all kind of shocked to hear, and, and it was a big takeaway that we, we have to watch those exemptions.
It would appear to me, and I remember seeing the case, that it's got a pretty unique set of facts, and I don't know how far that's going to be carried out.
May not be very far, but the concept I'm sure is something that different kinds of developers will be looking for. Now, if we were to say, bring a mitigated negative declaration to you, which is a certain level of study, and then you said you wanted an environmental impact report done, that's probably a lot more defensible because it's how much study is necessary before you are convinced that it's been studied enough. I, I think you're right. The issue here was, is it fully exempt or not? So you're right. A bit unique on its facts, but something we all, it opened a lot of eyes. The second, we thought this was coming. We may have even talked about it last fall, but there have been a lot of changes to the surplus land act. Most of them restrict your ability to do things. But there's one that might be interesting as you continue to look at the old chamber site. Any lease of a, a public property that's a lease of less than 15 years, if there's no demolition and no development, which appears to not include tenant improvements, but actual development of the site would be exempt from the surplus land act. So you wouldn't have to go through the full process. So as you continue to go down the road of how to, you know, potentially reuse that chamber site, it, that, that 15-year period of a lease might be something worth looking into. Just a thought that popped when I, you know, they were racing through exemptions, and that one popped into my head for Temple City. So I thought I'd raise it. The last one, there have been new laws regarding disruption of meetings and the ability to remove people from meetings. There was a case out of the city of LA called Dowd, and then new legislation. Basically what to look for, and we certainly don't have it here, but is, is actual disruption of the audience and the ability to carry the meeting. It's not one sensitive member of the council being upset about what's being said and walking out. It's, it's the council as a whole, the public not being able to have the meeting. So if people are making repetitive comments within their three-minute window, not much you can do. If people regularly exceed the three-minute window, and it's something that the city enforces, then a person who regularly exceeds that window could actually be removed from the meeting because they are stopping the rest of the public from being able to participate and stopping the council from going forward. Beyond that, obviously yelling from the seats, other things like that that actually disrupt the meeting now, based on the new laws, can be grounds for removal. So it's nice to have a little bit more clarity on that. Not that it's a major issue here today, but for the future, we always want to know what, what your rights are. And the final thing is, all of these are within the discretion of the chair of the meeting. So the mayor for our meetings here tonight is the one who has to exercise the discretion. That's what I have. Have a great night, and thank you much.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I'll move on to item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Is there anybody that would like to report out on any meetings they've had?
Nothing.
Okay. I think this might be a good time regarding the city commissioner ad hoc committee. Consisting of Councilmember Chen and myself, we've received six, I believe, six applications. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? I mean 12, but six new, six new applications. 12 altogether, six, six incumbents basically, or not incumbents, but six sitting, sitting commissioners and six new applications. I've discussed it with Councilmember Chen, and we've decided that we would like to interview the six new applicants. So if you could start that arrangement for that, we'll get that done, and then we can report back to the city council regarding what, if anything, we're going to do further. Is that okay with you, Madam Clerk? Okay, good. I'm asking questions while you're trying to take things down. It's kind of tough sometimes, I know. All right. So, so that will be the, what we're going to be doing there. It's nice to know, though, that we've, there's been a few times where we haven't gotten any new applications, as you may recall. And, but we've got some more interest building up perhaps in our commissions, and I think that's a good thing. So we'll see how that goes. Okay. Unless there's anything else, we will move on to item 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. And we'll start to my left, Councilmember Chen. Anything you'd like to add?
Just a couple of events that I had attended. I did attend the chamber's legislative luncheon featuring Senator Portantino.
The question is, though, was he actually there?
He was actually there. And being that he is termed out this November, he had a very earnest and very frank sharing of his experience up in this Capitol with the audience, and it was quite entertaining.
He didn't care what he said because it didn't matter anymore.
Exactly.
Did he what?
Did he leave us any money?
No, I don't. Uh, no.
Did he have any money to leave?
He had, probably has some, but it's not going here.
Well, good. It was good to see him back in the city.
Yes. I also took a tour. I appreciate Executive Director of San Gabriel Valley Human Society, Cindy Ring. I see her still in the audience. Thank you very much for being here and giving me, and my eyes were open. Thank you for the good work that you do. And I was able to take my son, who is, is on his first day out of school, to tour that facility. Luckily, well, we didn't take him any animals that day.
I was going to say, did you take an animal with you?
We did. Thank you very much for the tour.
I thought that was Cindy out there. I don't have my glasses on, so I can't see you very clearly, but thank you for coming here. Okay. Well, thank you for that report. Councilmember Mann is not present. Councilmember Sternquist, anything to add?
Attended the Temple City High School graduation along with our mayor, and hadn't been for quite some time. So it was really nice. I think the last time I went, the girls still wore yellow gowns.
Yep.
And everybody was in green gowns this time around. So it, it was lovely. It really was nice. It was a nice event, and the speakers were very energetic. So I was happy to be there. And then I attended, along with the mayor, the Miss Temple City Pageant, and that was really lovely to see also because it seemed like the program has been revitalized, and there were eight girls, which is a large amount, I think. In, in the past, we haven't had quite as many. And the competition was pretty challenging, I think. I mean, I, they were just all great. So it was really nice to be able to see them. And Tom, you can let us, let everyone know the name of our Miss Temple City and.
I was going to write it down there. Forgot. I forgot. I forgot. I was going to have the stuff with me, and I forgot. Next one. Well, we're going, I, I told them we would have them to the future council meeting. We'll introduce them.
So we can make it a surprise.
Yeah, we'll introduce them.
But they were two really nice events, and happy to be able to attend them.
Good. Thank you. Mayor Protam Yu?
Well, you know, I'm not much a social event person, but I must say, Mr. Mayor.
You're a busy guy. You don't have to apologize.
Yeah, but I'm very excited about these construction projects that have been going on because times, I mean, construction project takes a long, long time to prepare. And then at times we're asked, what are you guys doing? When is that Las Tunas project coming? But, but we're now, you know, have a whole series of improvement, reinvestment in the city. I'm just very excited about, you know, we started with Primrose Park, and now we're finishing our park. And obviously, you already mentioned, Mayor, about Live Oak Park. Today, we're buying life fixtures for Las Tunas, and then now we're talking about city hall reinvestment. I mean, that investment is going to last us another easily 40, 50 years. So just very excited about.
Well, and you should be. And I think we kind of tend to forget sometimes that the next six months are going to be a very busy time in the city. A lot of different things happening. It, it reminds me of the first time, I think you and I went to be interviewed by Star News when we first were running for election. And I forget the gentleman's name. He was with the editors there, very abrasive man, and commented on to us that, well, nothing ever happens in Temple City. Either he's not watching, or he's just not very smart because. Who was it? No, it wasn't Larry. It was the guy before him.
I can picture him.
Yeah, you remember who it is. But anyway, I don't know. But, but it's, you know, a lot of, a lot of exciting things happening, no question. Okay, well, thank you.
Just want to point out, a lot of things are being planned and finally coming to fruition.
Good deal. Okay. Just a couple of things I wanted to share with everyone. We, in addition to the commissioner's application period, we are now taking applications for next year's youth committee. We received 18 applications. So we, we tend to get a lot. So it's a lot to go through, but I've got them, I've got Peggy provided me some reading here. So we'll take a look at those and, and go through them, and, and we'll have more for that probably by the end of the summer. Let's see. Just wanted to remind everyone, I think we're going to have another meeting before then, but June 22nd, we have our compost giveaway. Ed knows, is familiar with that in his previous life, and we haven't had one for, for quite a while either. And that'll be at Live Oak Park, on the south side again, the same, same area. So if you're in need of any good compost, they do have good compost. So get there early. I'll never forget the time we were there, and the lady drives up in a Mercedes Benz, and she had no trash cans or no buckets, and we asked her, where do you want us to put this? And she said, in the trunk. In the trunk? You know, this stuff kind of smells. And she said, don't worry, it's a rental. So it was like, all right. Jerry, you probably remember that. Yes. Anyway, but and as Councilmember Sternquist alluded to, we fortunate to attend the graduation ceremony on Friday night and the Miss Temple City on Saturday night, both very well-attended events. I was pleasantly surprised to see the amount of people that were in attendance for the Miss Temple City. It's, it, and we can all remember, it's gotten, it's gotten to the point where it wasn't really doing very well. And thank you for the Historical Society, Don, for hosting that event as well. It was a great venue, and everyone had a great time. And and I can tell you that not only were the young ladies very talented, but they were, in their speeches, they, they had a lot of good things to say about the world and the community and their, their love for the community and all those things that, that made you feel good as a, I think as a parent and as an adult, to know that we have those types of, of young individuals in our city that, that think about those things. And so, you know, it was, it was very eye-opening.
They had a lot of insight into things that are very prevalent in society today. So it's almost the maturity of these young people is just, you know, I'm in awe of them. And a lot of them took personal issues that they suffer from themselves, mental, you know, health issues, which is, you know, so prevalent today, especially after COVID. So it was really, I mean, it was just so nice to see the level of, not only the achievements that they have, but what they want to achieve and what they want to do.
The maturity. It was good. And, you know, big shout out to Kyla Dunn, right? Kyla Dunn. I always call her Kyla Sickles. And her mom, Kim, for, for keeping that going. It's, yeah, we were a little worried about that for a while. But it's good that it's still going. And, and again, it's not a, it's not, at, at any means, it's not a beauty pageant. All the girls are very lovely, and they're very talented, but, but it's more, like I said, more of an ambassador program that, that I think lends itself well to those type of things.
You know, I, I still think, I, I don't think we've done it, but I recall some time ago when there were some issues with our chamber and our CEO at the time of the chamber in, you know, kind of bridging the relationship between the ambassador program and the chamber to see about supporting them. And I still think that, especially now that it seems to be revitalized, I think we should probably have a discussion about sponsoring them also. I mean, we do it with our sister cities. We do it with the Historical Society. But these girls are truly ambassadors because we see them throughout the community all year round. All year round, they're at, you know, lights on Temple City. They're at every function that I can think of that we, they have the opportunity, they go. So I, I just think it might be something that we can look at.
Yeah, well, they can always ask.
Yeah, so.
Okay. I had the opportunity, I think you guys remember that we were all invited to the grand opening of Choose Fitness. Unfortunately, we were all in Indian wells at the time, and so none of us were able to attend. But I did finally connect with the manager, Kelly, and presented them today with a certificate of recognition. And, and Brian and I, and Peggy and Roxanna got a, a tour of the place. Very nice. I was, I was very pleasantly surprised. Yeah, Brian, second time. I know you had gone yesterday. But it, it's very well done, and they did not spare any expense. I'll tell you that. It's, it's a beautiful place, clean, well-maintained. People are very nice, and anything you could possibly want to do in the nature of fitness, you can find there, I think. They even have a smoothie bar.
You know what I, I loved about it was, I, I think when I saw the sign, and they do have a $9.99 option monthly, and only with a dollar, they sent me an email. Did you get a text message today? Saying that it's a dollar to join, and then $9.99 per month if you should choose that option. But they had a nice placard there, and it said that they, the philosophy for Choose is that everyone should have the opportunity to exercise and be healthier. And it doesn't need to be only affluent that should be able. So something to that.
Well, they have different programs, and they're affordable. At least I thought they were.
Right. But it's kind of their, their foundation is that exercise should be something that is for everybody. It's attainable, and they try and keep the price with that philosophy in mind.
I always wonder why, when you go to a place like this, the people that are working out don't seem to need it.
No, they didn't.
And it makes you kind of like, okay.
You know, I think it's, it might be staged so that you go sign up because you want to look like them. I don't know.
Everyone I saw walking out that door didn't look like they were, you know, hurting for anything.
They were all in really great shape.
They were all in pretty good shape. Well, maybe they'd been going there for a while. I don't know. Anyway, but it, it was a nice place.
And they have daycare.
They have daycare. They have childcare as well. Yeah. Like I said, anything you want to do, they, they have it there. But, but we, we now have a choice. We have that place, and we have Planet Fitness. So we're fortunate in our city. No excuse, I guess, for our residents not to get in shape.
No.
There you go. All right. I think that's all I have. Let's see. We will now move on to item 15 and recess to our successor agency to the Temple City Community Development Agency meeting. So I'll call that meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if we could have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Agency member Chen?
Here.
Agency member Sternquist?
Here.
Vice Chair Yu?
Here.
Chair Chavez?
Here. Okay. We now move on to consent calendar. We have a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve.
Thank you.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Agency member Chen?
Yes.
Agency member Sternquist?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yu?
Yes.
Chair Chavez?
Yes. Okay, that motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to number. We will now move on to number four, unfinished business, none, new business, none, communications, none. Public comments, is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on anything? Now, this is for the successor agency, Cindy, we'll get to you in a minute. All right, so, see no one, we've closed public comments. Now, update from our executive director and agency council. Do we have anything, gentlemen? Nothing tonight? Matters for any agency members, any reports for anyone? No? Okay, then. Before we adjourn, I think we're almost done with this, aren't we?
Yes, I believe by fiscal year 2026, you will be dissolved as a successor agency.
Oh, I thought it was going to be sooner than that.
It's sometime, I believe it's sometime in the coming fiscal year.
Okay, okay.
The last payment. So, once the last payment is made, and the bond is satisfied and completely paid off, then by state law, the successor agency of Temple City no longer exists.
Okay, all right. One less thing to worry about. All right, well, with that, we are adjourned, and we will return to the regular city council meeting, and that is item sixteen, additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Now.
Well, you guys all know me, so hello again. I just want to thank you guys for renewing the contract again. I think we have a great relationship going, I am so very appreciative. Our board is very appreciative, we're working well together. I want to share that we had a fantastic Saturday, June first was the first-ever California Adopt a Pet Day, and over a hundred and fifty shelters participated, we were one. We adopted out twenty-four animals, eighteen cats and kittens, and six dogs. Statewide, the numbers are still coming in, but our goal was two thousand twenty-four. Well, we made the twenty-four, for sure, and the rest of the shelters are still coming in, but I think that number looking like it's going to be over three thousand. So, that is fantastic, because so many shelters are overcrowded, we are overrun, and it's all with big dogs. So, small dogs fly out. I would have brought a small dog tonight, but I don't have a small dog to bring.
We like the big dogs, so.
Yeah, I know, shepherds and huskies, but even the adopters that were...
We have a new Doberman.
Yeah, the Dobermann, I heard. Congratulations.
Yeah, we'll have to have Jane bring her to show her.
Well, and I have a pound puppy from San Gabriel, a husky. Yes, you do. So, see, we're getting the, okay, I told you, I got to get your son. We're working on you.
No, I have two cats.
You got the cats.
I have two cats from you guys, so.
And I wanted to share that we are celebrating our hundredth anniversary. Can you believe this?
And when is that?
So, we are, October nineteenth, we can just kind of...
Yeah, just give them over. Thank you.
October nineteenth, we are celebrating our one-hundredth year anniversary. Technically, it's June twenty-fourth of 2024, but we're having the celebration in October, and we would love for everyone from the city, the city council, everybody statewide, to come celebrate with us. It's going to be a great event. For those of you that made it to the ninety-fifth, this is just a more hyped-up version of that.
I think I won a trip to Disneyland, I think.
Did you?
I think I did.
Yeah, I think you did.
You did.
Yeah, we've got raffle prizes, we've got all sorts of fun stuff going on, we're going to have an alumni reunion, for those of you who have alumni animals, and the dog walk in the morning, blessing of the animals. It should be a wonderful, wonderful day, so I really hope to see you all there. And in the meantime, as council member Chen knows, drop by. Let's, let's...
Now, just so you know, I know you have a lot going on with the anniversary or anything, but when I was getting ready to become mayor again, I kind of put together a little to-do list, and you guys were on the to-do list, to try to organize some type of event, perhaps in the city, maybe a partnership-type of event, or maybe we could do it as a fundraiser as well, because I know you can always use the funds, so.
That would be fantastic.
We're still kind of working on that, so we'll be, staff and I, we'll get back to you on that, and we'll see if we can throw something together, because I know the people, I'll tell you, people in Temple City, as you know, love, you know, San Gabriel Valley. You remember a few years ago when we were thinking of going in a different direction, and you thought the earth was going to come to an end, right? But, which is good. But a lot of them miss some of the things that we used to do in Temple City, the events that we had in partnership with you, and they would like to see some of those things. I always get asked questions about that. So, we'll see what we can do, maybe...
Would love it.
And go from there, and at the same time, help the, you know, help you guys out a little bit, because I know you can always use that, so.
We would love to participate, yeah, let's work on that.
Well, thank you for coming, and we look forward to bringing a small dog, whatever you want to bring, bring them. Okay, we'll like it. All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? Don, come on up.
Miss Temple City is Madison Zhao.
Oh, there you go. We knew somebody we had written down.
I thought I'd let you know. And I want to make sure that the community knows that everyone is invited to the Friday Night Lights at Temple City High School at the field. We have a Temple City alum on this council, so Mr. Chen, and so it's June seventh, from six to nine, there's going to be lots of things to do. The snack bar is going to be open, lots of photo ops, the band's going to be playing. Roger Lockey from Brighterside is coming back, he's going to be leaving a special tribute at the beginning, and we'll do groundbreaking, and I know that, I believe all of you are invited to, for the groundbreaking there, so.
And you can take the turf if you need some.
Yes, they're going to be, as a fundraiser, they're selling vials of track turf and also sod from the field. I'm not quite sure which group's doing what. The Historical Society is going to have a table set up with lots of hands-on stuff. There's going to be old band uniforms, if you want to take pictures with it, lots of different things. So, I hope everybody who is interested comes out and checks it out.
Don, how about the yard sale?
And then on Saturday, from eight to two, the Historical Society is going to be having a yard sale in front of our building right on the corner here.
Wait, this weekend?
This weekend, on Saturday.
Oh, I haven't seen anything on that.
So...
Did you guys have that out?
There's a sign out in the yard.
Oh, in the yard, okay.
On Facebook. Yes, so...
Make sure you get your permit, though, will you?
I already have it.
Oh, okay.
I got it last week, thank you.
All right, good, okay.
No, so, yeah, come out and see what goodies we have.
You know, you mentioned, I forget, I was going to mention the Friday Night Lights. It seems to be getting a lot of publicity, and I expect a huge crowd to be there, actually.
You know, we, there is an RSVP, you don't have to RSVP, but a lot of people are responding to it and putting little comments, so people who went to Temple City High School in the past, or were a parent, or something like, or a community member, they're making comments, and, yeah, I suspect there will be a nice crowd.
I had a new client come in my office today, and he brought, she brought her daughter, and her daughter was looking around in my office and said, are you the mayor of Temple City? I said, yeah. Oh, I went to Temple City. She actually graduated from Temple City High School, and I told her about this event, she gets, was all excited to hear about it, so...
Yeah, we're just really trying to spread the word, because it's amazing how many people, it's like, oh, I didn't know they were going to do that, so, yeah, we wanted to get the word out as much as possible.
Good, I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, anyone else like to speak? If that's it, then we are adjourned.